Monday, August eighteenth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Calling me into order, looking for approval of the agenda.
So maybe if there's no corrections?
Second, we have a motion second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from August eleventh.
They appear corrections, so allow me a motion to include minutes.
Second, we have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Text my gov discussion, decision. Um, I think this has been going on for, or we've been talking about this for probably five or six or months. I know, Mike, you talked to Board of Health, they liked it. Um, I've talked to Jesse Ludwig at Conservation, Amy out of Rhodes, Jeff Collin, EMA. Um, Courtney, Pangray, Kretzinger. Um, Lisa. And I don't know anybody who is opposed to it. And what it is, um, is a service that people can opt out of. Where they can get text Dalton, would you like to explain it, Ben? You can do it better.
So, um, Scott, you've done a great job already explaining it, but, um. Uh, so all it is, it's just like an alert service. Um, you do want a website, sign up, put your phone number in there. Um, and then we can receive county alerts, you can receive county alerts from us, um. Whether that be from our emergency alert service, you know, um, weather coming in. Um, anything go on with Sheriff's Office, whatever, um, we're listening out if you're on that contact list. Um, you know, this gives us the ability to connect individual contact lists, so we have. Um, maybe a group for the department has figured out texts about as well. There's other ways we can use this, but, uh, yeah. It'll be on our website, they're really about getting them up there, you just send out the text messages, so.
One of the, or, um, so I talked to Don Meyer, they in Manning, and they love it, and they use it though more for. Community events like advertising, what's going on at the house farm this weekend or whatever, where I think we would use it. Courtney has mentioned, um, there's a couple Saturdays for early voting where the courthouse is open. Or looking for poll workers perhaps. Um, Rhodes could use it when plows are going out or plows are being pulled. Or when dust control is being applied, or you need to have your permit in, I mean, I can think of a lot of things, and I think the more. Transparent we are as a county, the better I think the people deserve it. And it's not a, a Facebook page where you may look at Facebook at night, this is a text, but again, like you said, you can opt out.
How many people in Manning use it? Did you say like?
They draw a zone around the city.
Fifty percent, or did you say how many are signed up for it?
She, she did not say how many people have opted out, but she explained the way they draw zones around the city limits.
This is automatically signed into, so I'm gonna get it right away, I'm gonna give a text, you have to sign up for it, that's what I'm wondering is, is.
You have to sign up for it.
You have to sign up for it, right.
Yeah, so like, you know, the, the, the back of our website, you wanna sign up, click it. You can get bigger information and you're on the list. But if you don't sign up, then you don't ever get it.
Right.
Could be nice to set out like taxes or something, you know?
Well, I think it's a great tool, I just would like, I got, I'm hesitant a little bit about who's all gonna for ten grand or whatever we're gonna spend on this. Um, how much, how much bang for the buck are we gonna get? I think it's a great tool, I just hope we're not.
We have Landon's on the Zoom call, if, if anybody has questions for text my gov instead of aiming them all at Dalton.
They don't have any.
They have a database, they're, they're gonna pull and get automatically.
The initial fee, I think. The initial fee is they somehow can track every number in Carroll County, if I understand it right.
Yeah, and then did, do they then send out a message and give people the option to sign up for it?
Landon, you want to chime in on this? Uh, I can see your combo.
Yeah, yeah, uh, thanks for having me. Uh, yeah, this is Landon with text my gov, just, just to go back to your, your opt-in questions here. So there's two ways residents can sign up. Uh, initially, we will pull a database of, uh, fifty-five hundred households that are eligible for enrollment. Those people will receive a welcome message from text my gov in your county. Just letting them know that they're, they're enrolled in the program, if they don't wanna be involved in, in county notifications from text by gov, they can reply stop to that welcome message. And then anybody that's not in that initial database poll, they can actually just hit, um. Sign up through the website or various marketing materials we will provide you guys, so they could sign up two ways. But initially, you guys will have roughly fifty-five hundred households enrolled, and, uh, anybody else that's not included in that, like I said, we can help market with your county. And get more signups to your website, uh, we could send you some flyers with QR codes they could simply scan in. Um, but yeah, your bit, your big head start will be that, that database import we could do.
Will we get some kind of a notification, how many people we have signed up for, it's like semi-annually, annually, just to see what?
Yeah, so on your website, on the very homepage of our dashboard, you could see how many people are enrolled at all times, and you could see how many people have opted out. Uh, even if they opt out, they can always, you know, rejoin the program at a later date, but you'll have access to all that opt-in info through your customized dashboard.
Okay, one time, my memory's not all that great anymore, but. I thought one time you said something, or somebody said something about twenty-two thousand initially that you're gonna do.
Um, it, it was, it's fifty-five hundred households was the quote we got back from USPS of how many eligible cell phones we could enroll.
Hey.
So.
Other question is. When you count a text, is that a text to each individual, or is it one text message sent out as a group?
So, for example, if you guys were to, let's say you guys send out a text to your first initial database of, of fifty-five hundred people. That would be fifty-five hundred text messages used.
Well, that's why you, these additional text messages could add up pretty quick.
Yeah, so, um. We have you guys slated for seventy-five thousand annual texts. And if you don't use those, all those do roll over into the next year. So, but it is, it isn't a lot of text messages, um, of seventy-five thousand per year.
I, I'd like to mention too, that you have another, you know, for another hundred thousand texts, you know, seven fifty, uh, fifty thousand is five fifty, and then another five.
Well, I'm just making a point, it's gonna be easy to get to those numbers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
If it's gonna be per individual text.
But I mean, we send out, you know, seven notifications, even notification, that's what we need it pretty quickly, so I can agree with that.
So what was extra per, we over the limit of texts? What is it again?
It's seven fifty for a hundred thousand, right here.
Fifty for a hundred thousand.
Ah, gotcha.
So at that fifty-five hundred, you only gotta send fourteen messages out, you'd have your, be over your limit.
Of the people who, unless a lot of people opt out.
Right.
So he's saying it's about, you know, those four people, right, in one year, but those.
But I'm just making a mistake.
You'd rather be higher than fifty-five hundred, you know?
Yep.
We're hoping to have ten thousand on there. Landon, can you explain how like, if you just, um, were the, um, text receiver, not a county employee sending it out? But if they wanna know about road notices, or if they wanna know about, um, child vaccines, or if they wanna know when early voting starts? Or if they wanna know when taxes are due, the categories they can check of which ones they want to be alerted on?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So when residents do opt into the program, they're gonna see a list of categories that you guys would have created, or our setup team helps you create. They'll see, they'll see like, um, a, a treasurer's office, or, or tax, taxed reminders, or road alerts. You guys can create as many categories as you want, and the residents can choose which, which categories they want to receive alerts from. So you guys are full control, you, you guys could set up, you know, five, ten categories departments, um, and then residents can choose which groups they wanna be a part of. There's also the option, of course, where they can just do, uh, um. A countywide opt-in where they get every message from every department, but they can also drill down to specific interests too.
And again, if they want to opt out of all of them, all they gotta do is type stop.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. If they hit stop, it just, it automatically removes them from every group, they don't have to go to a page and uncheck all these boxes, it's as simple opt-out as it is an opt-in.
So, um, I didn't, I was. On the terms and agreements, Courtney and I talked to him on Friday, talked to Landon and, uh, um. Discussed it down to two years, the initial package, instead of, um, three years, and then it'll be annual enrollment afterwards if we decide that. It's a service that we're providing, keeping the public aware of whatever events they wanna be aware of, then it'll be an annual fee after that. So if we were to vote on this today, we would be, um, it would be a two-year contract. And the setup fees for them to capture all the data.
We're talking eighteen thousand for two years.
No, fifteen.
Three thousand per setup. Nine thousand for the first year and.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Right. You know, that's, that's three is the first year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, the setup fee is a one-time fee, your annual fee is at six thousand.
So what we did was got rid of an additional six thousand and signing up for three years.
Fifteen thousand. Good years.
I said, I, the people I talked to were all in favor of it, Jeff Cullen was big time as far as. Um, if there's a car wreck or a road closure as far as avoid this area, um. Again, secondary roads, I would think a lot of people would wanna know if the plows were being pulled at two o'clock in the afternoon because of upcoming weather.
Well, particularly right now during construction, there's like, on that road by Hell, where they can best buy.
On my foot, yeah.
There, there, I can see some advantages to this program.
Um, and who would have access, I guess my only question, um, is who has access to send out those?
Oh, we have, I'm, I'm, I'm limited amount of users we can make, so.
Which we wouldn't obviously want to do.
So we can make whoever posts, you know, whether it be department heads, or wherever we decide, we make accounts.
Like Rhodes might have three different people, perhaps.
But we, yeah, we have, I'm limited, I'm not excited next one, so.
Jason Hoffman isn't here, but, um, Landon, you spoke extensively with him. But he says, um. Sign up for Alert Iowa for emergency weather, urgent public safety, special needs registry. Sign up for text my gov for non-emergency notifications, community information, and public service inquiries. That was his take on it, he just wanted to make sure people weren't mixing the two up where, um, text my gov is not for. Um, it wouldn't be a notification that would come out from, like, uh, Alert Iowa.
I do, I do wanna point out that I think if you do, if you have ten thousand users. And you text once a week, it's gonna cost us thirty-five hundred fifty bucks more a year in additionals. So that's like the hidden fee.
That's what. And again, I think hopefully the users, which I think would be designated by the department heads. Would think before they sent something out, or they would wanna include as much as they could in it.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, Mike, yes, it is, um, I don't wanna say a hidden fee, but, um, it's not unlimited usage, how's that?
There you go. We, we got lots, a lot, a lot of good things with this, but like I said, some people just courtesy, hey, we're sending this out, which maybe they don't really need to put out there, you know, the, yeah. I, it's good information, don't get me wrong, but like Mike said, pretty soon we're gonna be pretty high on the limit if we keep.
Landed on it, yeah.
Yeah.
No, he's still there.
Is he?
I'm, I'm still here, yeah.
Landed, landed on here, it says unlimited texts are available as well, um, do you know what price on that?
Yeah, let me, uh, pull that up for you. So based on your population, if you guys wanted to go to unlimited. That would increase your, um, your annual fee to, from, from six thousand to, to ten thousand for unlimited texting.
And can we, if we, after year one, went over our limit and decided that, hey, people like this, we're using it more than we thought? We at that time up the limit?
Yeah, you guys could work with us on increasing your text limit that next year, yeah, for sure.
Cause I mean, if we have a, a horrible winter like last year, there could be several road alerts go out as far as.
A week, a week, you know, yeah.
I think this will roll the punches first year.
And go unlimited?
No. Test it out.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can adjust your text message allotment for that second year, so you don't, that way, if you guys wanna look into the unlimited option, um. Like I said, that would be an additional four thousand, yeah, we, that's, that's no problem to, after your first year reassess your allotment and, and up it or, or adjust it.
Thirty-five, fifty.
If, if you.
I've only one text a week. Which I mean, most weeks we wouldn't. Maybe we've got some department heads here, how often, Lisa, you would use it a couple times a year, perhaps saying taxes are due on this date? Yep. So you would not even use this service?
I do the radio station, maybe four days a week, um, before, then it's six one hour, six one fifty hour. They advertise for days. But, you know. Then put in the local newspaper for, and I have. Um, one day a week, a week of the four tasks we do.
I was gonna say the new, yeah, written newspapers are kinda, where, again, this is different than Facebook where. This is, most people, when they get a text within fifteen minutes, say, look, just to see who it's from, they may not read it, but, um.
Lisa, if we did it though, what, what would you, how many, often would you put a post out?
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Courtney, you would do it?
Probably just for elections.
And then we have four half closures too, you know that happens, but we have like a snowboard or something bad, and you're supposed to four houses, it would probably be something to do.
And I'm thinking the, um.
With elections, how the text would be?
Depends on how many elections I know that year, so, um, on a busy year, it could be. I don't know. Because you're gonna wanna alert people when early voting starts, you probably.
And in that, you could include in that same text that we're open on these two Saturdays also.
And then probably election day, you probably send out a text reminding people that. When the polls are open and where, where the polling locations are.
And that early in-person voting at seat.
Probably two text messages per election, maybe.
Okay, now you're, you're talking some hefty data, is there a limit to the not data that you, we can put in per text?
Landon?
Yeah, so when you guys send out a message, there is. I'll just make sure I get the character limit, uh, correct for you here. And you guys will be able to host links and, and all that stuff too, if you wanna like, just do a, a, a quick reminder, you could also like, say, here's the link to this, or you could send out a form with more information, you don't have to. Necessarily type.
That's right.
Yeah, you, you guys can host links and forms and, and link them back to the webpage that has more info. Um, but initially, you guys would have a. Cause I know they just recently upped that, so I'll make sure I give you the right character limit number.
I'd like to know.
Yeah, you guys will have a thousand character limit on when you send out a text.
That's a book, yeah.
So if you wanna say, if you wanna send out a, you can, you can send out a message that big, but like I said. Uh, what I've seen a lot of, a lot of counties do is simply just send out a quick reminder, here's a link to our website for more info, here's a link to our Facebook post. Um, but, uh, yeah, you do have the option to, 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 you know, use that thousand characters.
Ashton, you shook your head, you wouldn't use it, you don't think at all? It, does anybody?
Does anybody put anything on Facebook right now? I'm just asking, do you get a lot of replies on Facebook with that stuff? I'm just trying to think how much we, how many people would use this thing? Okay, that's where I think the biggest could be.
So like whenever we do send one of these text messages out, it does have a Facebook integration, you know, on how they post on Facebook.
I'm not saying, what I'm trying to get is how many people look at the Facebook pages, what I'm trying to get, huh?
Not as many, I think Facebook's old.
But if we put this out there, I mean, I'm just trying to say, do, do we know how many people would use this, same thing, is it gonna be user?
You're gonna have a better chance of getting a text message, somebody realizing it than you would a Facebook, a platform. Um, I mean, a lot of people are going to, the younger generations are going to Instagram, they're not, they don't even go to Facebook, I don't. I know last time I got on Facebook.
No, I'm just trying to figure out how many people, if, when you send it out, did you get hundred replies, a thousand replies? That's why it's good that.
Yeah.
Cause this is gonna be new too, like Facebook, I get people are gonna use it, but are they gonna get tired after? Well, months or a year, a couple of years, I think.
I think it's old, you use it probably.
I get it, road conditions are probably gonna be the biggest user of it, or road closures due to, um, an accident.
Or any emergencies, and I, and I, I think, I do, do believe that this is probably one way you'll be able to get the people to look at it quicker. Uh, let's face it. Newspaper and radio is kind of going by the wayside, and I think Facebook is also. I, I, I didn't wanna shoot an arrow at you. Oh, but I mean, facts are fact, I mean, how many, how many people here have a, have a newspaper subscription?
I'm a little guy.
Yeah, the old, yeah, the three old ones.
I'm a little guy, yeah.
In the past.
That, that, that just proves my phone.
People here though, when they, when their phone beeps, if they get a text, look at it within fifteen minutes, I think everybody does.
In the past twenty-eight days, we've had a hundred views on our Facebook page. So, not gonna get behind that, people are gonna do.
Both are people, hello?
Uh, in twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight days.
We sent out a text and you have five thousand or ten thousand views. Instantly.
And remember. One of those things where. You're just sending it to everybody.
It's not gonna be junk email, if you don't want it, S E O P, you're done, but again, I think we have. Well over four thousand rural residents who are gonna care. Or let's just say if you work in Manning, and you know the files are coming off the road, and you live in Litterdale. And the files, you get a warning that says files are coming up at two o'clock, you're gonna leave at noon to, to get home. And those are the people who are gonna wanna care that stay signed up.
That happens, I mean, I, I listen to the radio.
Nickin, childhood vaccinations, um, would Maggie, would Public Health put something like that on there, Mike, or what do you see Public Health? Yeah, conservation using it for trail closures.
Yes, stuff like that, and the same with Public Health, you know, we said it's not a tool, but it's something out every day.
Right.
When there's a, when there's something big event, or, yeah.
You can say, I phoned from a warehouse every day, that was something we could have.
True.
Yeah, good point. Okay, does anybody have any more questions for Dalton or Landon?
I think it'd be really, um, useful, it's just expensive.
For what?
I think. My, in my.
I think it's good, I think it's one of the most useful things we would have, but I think it's expensive.
That's why my.
But I, I would like to know right now what we spend on radio and cor, or in newspaper. I don't know.
Well, Mike, that radio newspaper, particularly newspaper, we have no control.
I understand that, I'm just asking, I'd like to know what we spend on it.
But I think that'd be a good conversation to have with legislators.
Absolutely.
What's point of this anymore? Can we find a new way of advertising or different platforms?
And I plan to rock for this service if we do do this, so I can always give you, if you wanna ask me, how many people are using that, I can tell you them too, and how close we're getting to our limit and all that good stuff, so.
Yep.
Um. And maybe, and Courtney, I kinda talk maybe this is something that come on my budget. That way, you know, it's something I'm checking in every year on, cause I know I have the budget for it, so then I'm, I'm kinda keeping on it that way.
Again, it would be a two-year trial period, and it is. A decent amount of money, but for those who are gonna rely on it, and that don't, again, a lot of people, Gene probably didn't have Facebook. Um, but you don't look at that all the time.
I don't.
But when you get a text, you do look at it, and I think there are certain cases where the public, um, I think would appreciate being notified.
Yeah, and I, I'll just add on to, as far as engagement, we've, we've done some studies on, on just how quickly text messages are read versus Facebook and email. The average text is, for one, it's open ninety-eight percent of the time, and it's open within the first ninety seconds. Uh, email and Facebook are down closer to the high twenty percent range right now, as far as if they're even open or viewed. So your engagement is gonna be extremely high when you send out a text versus, uh, those other avenues, that, and that's just, that's just based on, um. Some research we've done with those platforms.
All right, in the interest of time, is anybody having more questions for Landon or Dalton?
And I think to offset some of the expense, we can find a different way, we can use this as our advertising.
Yeah.
Yeah, me and Jason talked about even using this as a platform to, uh, increase Alert Iowa's users, hey, you know, we have an alert. Iowa system that's, that's, can be utilized for emergencies, this is how you sign up. So if you guys wanna use this as a tool to, you know, just remind people, there is another option to receive those critical alerts, you know? You, you could use our tool essentially to, to promote that.
Okay. So what are our thoughts? That you wanna make a motion for a two-year contract with text my gov?
Well, being as I'm the old fart here, and, uh, probably least technical person, I'll make a motion to. Cause I do see value in it, so.
We have a motion, there's a second. I'll second that. We have a motion and the second, sign a two-year contract. Would text my gov, any more discussion from the board? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Mark, motion carries. Thank you, thanks, uh, Landon.
All right, thank you, guys.
Um, item two, approve a plat requested by Jay Bob Over, owned by Leon, Leon Bob Over, on two hundred and thirtieth near Kitty Hawk.
Uh, this is, they're splitting this off for new acreage, uh, I see no problem with it, I'll make a motion to approve the plat.
I'll second. We have a motion in second, all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. Item three, approve Class C retail alcohol license, licenses, whiskey run LLC on Ivy and Maple River.
So many.
Second, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, discuss courthouse first floor signage. Um. So the HVAC remodel was completed well over a year ago, passports have been moved out of the courthouse. Treasurer's office and auditor's office have changed locations, many people seem lost. When looking to do business in the courthouse, I think we owe it to the public. To direct people to the proper office with directional signs. There's many types of signs, I'm not sure it's a board of decision, or board supervisor's decision, but there's a lot of confused. Residents on where to go to get what they need, that's just my opening statement, I, um. I'm open to any suggestions, in hospitals, they have signs hanging overhead that say x-ray this way, radiology this way. We have windows we can put signs on.
Hmm.
I think the public needs to know that.
I think signage is wonderful, we can definitely do it, but we have to make it more, um, not tacky.
I know, that's why I'm open to any suggestion.
There's definitely tons of opportunity we have, I mean, but.
It seems like eighty percent of the foot traffic goes to the treasurer's office, whether it's license renewal.
We have signage, it's just out, I think it's probably outdated, um, and that needs to come down and put.
When they walk in a door, they don't see where they gotta go.
Yeah, you could put first floor, there's definitely plenty of options.
I think that, uh, well. Even down directional sign would be ideal.
You got corners, you put some on the corners also, on the Archer corner, treasurer's corner, they put it on the corner of the recorder and assessors that arrow pointing this way.
One, or point. Each office could also advertise that here's where you get a marriage license, or here's where you renew your license, or here's where you transfer a title. Or here's where you, yeah, each, here's where you vote, here's where you register to vote.
We have three department heads in here, what do you guys think?
Um, I do see a lot of people. Minor officers that wouldn't, I don't know, wouldn't, a lot of people look at that, but I'm just saying it's hard to read, maybe just updating that.
Getting rid of the, it's those little peg letters, isn't it? Yeah. Those can probably go.
Nineteen fifty.
Um. Welcome to twenty twenty-five.
Which was you talking?
Against the wall.
I agree with what Ashton says.
There's this, uh, uh, thing that Zach puts letters in. I, I hundred percent agree with that.
I, I don't think we're gonna have enough space to, to.
What did you say, Lisa?
That, a lot of times they don't know, hey, do I do the, my vote at the recorder, or do I do that at the charger?
Yeah.
You know, they're still gonna come to the counters and ask, where do I, where do I go with?
Okay, I mean. But I think it'd be nice to have a little bit more of a defined, well, yeah. First floor, second floor, or whatever, and it is confusing our floors.
It is.
Because on the back side, this is what you walk into, but if you go on the front side, you're up.
They're ground.
I think the problem is, is when they walk in, they can see recorder, and they can see assessor. But they can't see auditor and treasurer, because our names are on the other side, they have to come all the way around, and the treasurer's office is where I'm at, been to fifty-some years.
Well, that's why I think that.
Go that way.
Something from up above, they're just showing this way, this way, treasure. Be out of the way, and it's, it's in their line of focus as they come to the door.
Yeah.
I just. Something on our side windows, or my side window, that doesn't have access to talk to the public, that we maybe don't know that that's what that office is. And that's.
That's a good idea.
Also put what you're doing on the. Advertising, where you go to. Remember we have a registration, your taxes.
This door closed, people still want to.
Yep. Yep.
I think, I mean, we all have really good ideas. I just think updating, make it more eligible, probably, you know, that. On your gaze is both side windows doing something. I think that's a good idea, just making it more clear to the public.
And we've been in contact with, I believe it was Outlaw Graphics about getting something. I mean, they have the logo, cause it used to be on the walls in some of the offices. But. I was kinda waiting to get a price back because. I don't have a lot of wiggle room in my budget for that kinda stuff. And I thought, well, if the board was in favor of it, we could move forward, but.
Couldn't you put like on the glass on actions, it's boat renewals, uh, drivers or fishing license, hunting license.
Partridge license.
Oh, just those glass, glass, maybe.
Above, maybe, because like the pillars is where everybody comes to talk, so you don't really want them there.
No, but I mean, like on the side, maybe or something, whatever, yeah.
I think there's definitely options.
Who wants to take the lead?
We have, we have a contact that we were, reached out to. We're just kinda waiting to hear.
Outlaw graphics and get suggestions from them or?
Well, I mean, maybe get a couple quotes. There's. There's other businesses in town that do that, so maybe we just get a few quotes on what it costs.
I think we need a receipt.
I just don't like it that, that glass window, people stop there and they think they can, we can help them.
Right.
And you can't hear.
Yeah.
And I had one lady banging on it, like, and she thought I was ignoring her, but I, I wasn't. I couldn't hear her, cause. So, yeah, if we could get something to, you could still, like, we could still see out, we could still see light coming through there, but. People would know that not to stop.
Need to be a supervisor thing or can it be the four offices come up with something?
Well, I think.
I think they can come up with something and then the supervisor will just figure out how, where we're gonna pull it from, whether it's.
It'd be nice if we were all on the same page as far as. Like what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, no, obviously it's gonna stay for things.
Yep.
But if that, we could all come to an agreement on what, yeah, the general theme of it or what it's gonna look like and then go from there.
That'd be worth it. I think it would pay off as far as, a lot of people come in with a title confused, like, where do I go? Whichever window has the least traffic, they'll go to Ashton's office to ask, where do I go? Because there might be a line at the treasurer's office, which is where they need to go.
Right, right.
Well, I think majority of people know where they, which office they gotta go to. I think most of them do. But I think just those even directional would. Help out because I think particularly your office and your office are hidden in the back where your name's read. I think that's where the biggest confusion is at.
Yeah.
And beans, they got flip-flop too.
Well, and they were that way for fifty-some years, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're, we've passed the one-year mark. I was thinking.
It didn't, it doesn't matter.
No, but.
I don't know why.
We're creatures of habit.
So I guess, yeah, it was supposed to just be a discussion on.
I'd say keep the ball rolling, have a couple of different ideas, maybe get a different company as well.
Bring it back to it.
I think it's a good idea.
Any questions from anybody, Lisa, Ash? All right, thanks for the discussion. Item number four, or item number five, manure management updates. Alex Weedrun, section twenty-five, Neese Township, no changes. Blue Horizon Pork, section ten, Wheatland Township, no changes. Bladen Pork, section seventeen, Union Township, no changes. Kennebec Farms, section thirteen, Roselle Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Item six, committee reports.
I can go first. Last week I did stop by here for the ninety-nine county tour, but going some topic that I did have to jacks out in the meeting. And this week I will be on ISAC from Tuesday night until Friday.
I can go next. Uh, last Tuesday, I was here for ISAC ninety-nine county tour. Uh, for it being the number third, number third tour they done. I thought it was very good, informative. Um, and then also on Tuesday, I had Rolling Hill Board Meeting. Uh, at this board meeting, we did. We did vote to dissolution, the twenty-eight agreement effective December thirty-first. Uh, and reason we made it till December thirty-first, cause there's an audit that's gotta come up yet and stuff, so we're basically. Pretty well winding down on the end of this thing, so.
You're stacking to tell the audit.
It's not that we wanna do this, but we're forced by the state legislature, so anyway. Tuesday night was policy council and Thursday night I had, Thursday I had CCGP executive board meeting. Uh, there, they were basically just, uh, doing more, had more conversation on the strategic plan. And then Thursday, um. Afternoon, um, well, I should back up on our mental health. We do have about, looks like we're gonna wind up a point three million dollars on our mental health that will be going back to state. And that probably won't go until the end of December also. Um. Then, um. Where was I? Okay, new opportunities board meeting. Um, we went over through everything that went through the policy council meeting. We talked about the Milwaukee Head Start, early Head Start construction and this. Contract, we did approve a contract of Butsy Roach, Broach Construction. As I think I told you last time, we're with the twenty-two thousand dollars under the budget we had for. The project, but we are also gonna sign this contract now, but we're gonna do value engineering, try to cut some corners. So we got a little more room to breathe for any unexpected things coming up. Um. Basically went through all the fall, uh, fall programming for Head Start and then. Also some child and care food program policies, um, whole bunch of policies that we approved on different things. Uh, then, uh, Friday was the Yes Center Board Meeting. Um. Things seemed to be going good there. We had thirteen in there as of that day and averaged ten point two. Um. So, and we look for our state checks should be coming here probably next week. Uh, this week I got TCGP meeting on Tuesday. And then I said. I think two Friday.
I go next. Uh, this week, Monday, I did go out to secondary roads and looked at the original river road agreement from nineteen ninety-nine. It's already a level C, so I don't see any further action from the board coming on that. Now it's up to secondary roads. Conservation and the landowner, landowners of where to put the gates. Um, also, Monday, the mayor, Lanesborough, sent me a picture of the demolished house that has been in the works for years. We forgave the taxes on that. It's finally.
Knocked out.
It's, it's done. It's a piece of dirt now. Um. Also Monday, Carroll City Council, Tuesday, ISAC, um, their ninety-nine county visit was here, well attended. Wednesday, Executive Board. Um, at the landfill, we did agree to sell between four and five acres. To Olson's Outdoor Power, which is right across the street from where they are now. It's landfill property. Um, and we'd also at the landfill formed a subcommittee to write a job description for the director position as we see a retirement coming. Um, Friday, I helped with RSVP, um, golf fundraiser. I get raised around, um, six thousand dollars. And also Lisa sent an email, Mark, this might apply to you. We got sixty-eight hundred more dollars came in from the opioid funds from the county attorney's office. Um, Saturday I did do a sheriff ride along and spent a couple hours in the jail. Um, yesterday I sent a letter, I think maybe we all got it, for USDA Rural Development for Housing Prevention Grant. For Region Twelve for a hundred and ten thousand dollars from Chris Werker, so I applied and sent that back. This week, um, tomorrow, there's a sheriff sale and then CCGP, Gene will be there at Western Iowa Networks with. Dan Colhane, who's the president and CEO of Ames Regional Alliance. And I think they're growing. Um, Wednesday through Friday, ISAC Fall Conference. Friday, I'll get back and look through Rhodes Claims, Courthouse Claims.
I think that we, well, everybody's.
Yeah, everybody's invited.
Okay, that's it. Of Western Iowa Networks tomorrow. Even on the development.
Yeah.
Um, I'll go next, uh, Tuesday. I stopped and talked to Maggie Paul again about this opioid money. We just can't get any applications for it. So I was looking online, trying to figure out a few ways we can.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, down at ISAC.
Yeah, and they're gonna actually talked about it. We, when, I was gonna say that I attended the ISAC. Uh, conference or on Tuesday, and they were actually gonna try to get a website set up so we can see where some of the other counties are spending their money. We need to. It's money we need to use and use it for the right purposes and, and hopefully we get, get some more applications for it.
I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Um. And I've been, like I said, all week long, I've been working on some of that opioid money. Um, Friday, I attended Chamber Coffee at Home Options, Home Care Options, have a neat, neat business they have there, very interesting. And then I stopped outside.
Yeah, me too, partner.
And, uh, talked with Amy Fernading as we have a safety meeting on Tuesday and see if she needed any help, any agenda items. This week, I've got childcare board meeting today. I've got a safety meeting tomorrow that I plan on having economic development, uh, tomorrow at noon. And, uh, then Friday, Wednesday through Friday, I'm attending the ISAC conference also.
Uh, last week, uh, we had. Conservation and the only thing, uh, that they really want to discuss is that they're.
I know we there with drones on the lake, so people don't get. Freaked out. Right, was it Otis or I don't know. Basic species, but, um, I don't have nothing on agenda. Thank you.
Excellent. And this is most like their, um, Amy, uh, jump home, they've reached out to me about the safety committee and. Speaking of conference and then trying to still move forward with doing some. Different activities throughout the courthouse, whether it's fire drill, tornado drill or active shooter. We do wanna keep moving forward with that. Um, but just touch base with them tomorrow and see if he got any.
Think, uh.
Okay.
Tom Francis, no, good. On that, I think he's back and maybe, I don't know, about capacity where he maybe do that active shooter, maybe possible.
Through the whole courthouse.
Yep, yep, yep. No, stop, we'll put mixtures on the agenda. Thank you.
Is there any comments from those in attendance? Courtney, next week, we got CCGP, sounds like an update.
Bill Day, um, Rhodes will have something and then the CCGP presentation from Kimberly.
Yep.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and second, we are adjourned nine forty-one.